Yeah.
Thank you.
You're not needed.
Thank you, Leona. First item on the agenda is appointment of vice chair. But before we start that, I'd like to have you introduce yourselves so that everyone in the audience can know who you are.
Chris Rome line.
Carolyn Warren.
George Walsh.
Christine Ryan.
Joan Chabot.
Randy LeBeau.
Jay Edwards.
Tony DiSisto.
Nancy Miller.
Thank you. We have Chris, Carolyn, and George are the three members of the general public that are on the subcommittee, three counselors here. And Mr. Senator, no, Representative Jay Edwards is our representative from the state. Appointment of vice chair, that's the first order of business per the resolution on the casino subcommittee. Would like to take nominations for the position of vice chair.
Madam Chair, make a motion to appoint Councilman Randy LeBeau as a vice chair.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Tony? Do I need to take more than one nomination?
You can if you want, yes.
Are there any other nominations for vice chair?
Christine Ryan.
Christine Ryan, do I have a second?
Second.
Any other nominations for vice chair? Very good. First nomination is Randy LeBeau for vice chair.
I would like to not be.
I appreciate it, but I have too much going on and I think Ms. Ryan will do a way better
job than me.
Okay, so Mr. LeBeau is declining the nomination. Thank you, Mr. LeBeau. I have a motion in second on the floor for Christine Ryan as vice chair. All those in favor? In unanimous. Thank you. We now have Christine Ryan as vice chair of the Tiverton Town Council Casino Subcommittee. Next item on the agenda is general discussion on procedures, goals, and objectives. I believe everybody has seen the resolution for this subcommittee. And just to go over the purpose of the subcommittee, we've gone over the membership. Okay. So, the purpose of the subcommittee will be to meet with legislators, state agencies, and government officials, Twin River Casino representatives, and the public, and any other necessary person, group, or committee involved in the process of performing proper due diligence now that the voters have approved a casino in Tiverton at the November 8th, 2016 election. Subcommittee will continue the diligence through the development process of the casino, including but not limited to developing a plan for the allocation of gaming revenue for the casino, development of a host community agreement, and any other issues deemed necessary regarding the casino. From my perspective, the one goal, the first goal of this subcommittee is to put together a recommendation for the town council on a host community agreement. That should be, I believe, our top priority. I think in reviewing the documentation that was put together, we have a lot of information on casino host community agreements in Massachusetts, and actually their procedure requires a host community agreement to be in place before they even, put it before the volders. So, that's Massachusetts process, that's not Rhode Island's process. Rhode Island's process works through the state to get the question of a casino on the ballot, it goes through the state process.
It's because the state holds the license.
The state holds the license. That explains it. So, I think if we're all in agreement, that would be the first priority.
May I ask if we can have, if the three of us could have copies of the resume?
Motion?
Don't fill us out. I think only the council members can.
Actually, as we're going through this, you know, if you don't have something, we'll stop making lists because I think everybody's got the book at least, and a couple of the host community agreements. But yeah, by all means, keep saying that.
Yes, Mr. LeBeau?
I would like to make a suggestion. It's early on, but before we get too far into what's going to go on here, I would like to appoint a special AO to handle all the operations of the casino. I would like the town council to hire an AO and have the casino people pay the bill. I don't know if anybody from the casinos here or not, but we need a special AO just to handle process for the casino, is that okay, Tony?
I want to explain what AO is, just so everyone knows.
Explain what AO is, sir, but no. My mic's not working.
The town's administrative officer, so that you all know, by statute, the planning board has an administrative officer that coordinates applications in other matters for the applicants as it goes through the planning process.
And as we, right now in town, we are in the process of hiring a new AO. So, I would like an AO that just handles just the casino. So, all the stuff that comes in for the casino goes to this person that we hire without, again, the town's not paying one cent for anything. The casino's going to pick up the bill. And this way, everything will be in order, it's not going to go from person to person to person. This one person will handle everything to do with the casino, and anything that needs to be reported will be reported to the council. Tony, is that legal for us to have a second AO, are we good?
Well, here's the thing, and you can, by the way.
The subcommittee can?
Hold on. Before we even get to that.
Yeah.
I just, I'd like to say a few things. I think Joan made a very good point in her opening comments, and that is the nature of a host community agreement. And I know in Massachusetts that these host community agreements can be seen as not only governing the relationship between the casino and the host community after the facility is up and running, but also some issues prior to. There is no requirement for a host community, host community agreement in the state of Rhode Island. And in fact, the state has what's known as a master contract, over and above the statutory provisions that govern, Jay, as you know, the casinos. And the proposal now, which was in the legislation, is that Tiverton and Lincoln will be signatory for the first time on the state's master contract. That's the first thing. But in favor of having a host community agreement, and what Randy brought up, has those two provisions that I think you need to discuss. The first one being the host community agreement provisions that will govern the relationship between the casino and the town going forward. The next question is, is do you want to put any provisions into a host community agreement that govern those issues with the casino, not only during the permitting process, but also through the construction process prior to the opening of the casino and the facility being operating? And I think that's one of the predicate issues you need to, need to discuss. I can tell you-
Can you repeat that? Sorry.
Not the whole thing, I hope.
No, but just the last thing that you need to predict. No, you don't need to go from the beginning, but after going forward.
Yeah.
You just said there were two things that we need to-
Correct. I think a predicate issue that you need to discuss-
Yep.
-is if you feel that a host community agreement is something that would be beneficial to the town, the next question is, for the host community agreement, not only wouldn't its provisions govern the relationship between the town and the casino after it is operational, but also should there be any provisions before it is operational, during construction process, and during the permitting process? I think, Randy, that's where you're coming from-
Correct.
-on that, on that issue. So, you know, I can tell you this, in 2006, although I don't think the West Warwick Host Community Agreement fits this particular proposal, it had a lot of provisions in there that are frankly not relevant, that did have provisions pre-construction and during the permitting process also. So, it's something to consider in your deliberations.
Would you give us a copy of that?
I can, yes. That was the Harris.
I know. I never saw the agreement.
What's the short answer, no?
It's something you can consider, yes.
Okay.
Something we can consider to recommend to the town council.
That's correct. Yes, it would have to be, the AO appointment is by the, by the town council, but it's something to discuss, I think, in connection with this, if you want to make a recommendation. But you might want to tie it into other provisions.
Some of the, I know we're going to get into this in more detail, but some of the HCAs that I've seen in, from other towns, it has been before it gets operational, as well as after, at least I've only, the few of them that I have seen, there have been paragraphs that have said this, and it has, you know, lots of different things. I'm just trying to look over this stuff to see what is, what are some of the provisions that kind of cross a lot of the HCAs, and there are a lot, that, that, you know, it's just a paragraph, but it's just like, it's very clear that there's a whole list of them that go, and one of them was the pre-operational. So, okay. That's all.
So, we're going to leave this out, the council will speak about, we'll get together and discuss whether we want, I really, I really think we need to have an AO, somebody's going to run the show over me, so we should bring that to the council, is that what you're saying?
Yes, that's one of the issues, but you might want to take a look at some other pre, I'm going to use the term pre-operational issues, the roundabout and how that's being constructed, and you already have an agreement in place with the state. But if there are any issues, local issues, that you think might need vetting by the town and perhaps agreements with the developer on this thing, those are some of the things that you'd want to take a look at.
Okay, so, I just want to make it clear, as far as our first priority should be host community agreement. Where it has a plan for allocation of gaming revenue, that could be part of the host agreement, correct?
Yes.
So, it's not a separate item or deliverable. It's not a separate product. The product that we develop is our recommendation for a host community agreement to the town council.
Yes, but I think more importantly, if you're talking allocation, there would have to be the enactment of ordinances to support that.
Okay, is the home community agreement ultimately an ordinance similar to West Warwick?
No.
Okay.
That's correct, yes.
What'd you say?
A pure and simple contract.
Which is the host community agreement?
Yes.
Okay. So, in effect, the second product could be an ordinance, recommended ordinance for potential gaming revenue allocation.
That's correct, yes.
Does that make sense?
I would just, I would just say, yeah, my understanding is a host community agreement, that really has a priority. And I know when we get more into priority, just because it's got, because there's a time issue, and solely that, it's just like, and I think once we start doing with the revenues and game allocation and all of that stuff, I think that could take a bit more time, and we want to get more input from the public, I would think.
And that's, that certainly is true. This item on the agenda is to discuss our goals and objectives, so we have to identify all of our goals, not just-
No, no, but you had mentioned priority, and it was just like, I would agree with that, that that is the, the HCA is the priority. Is that, is that not true, that that has got a timing, a more pressing time, timeframe than the, than the allocation?
Correct. You know, I think those permitting issues, because the application is already in play-
Yep.
-that that would take a priority.
Yep.
Madam Chair?
Yes?
Can I ask a question? So, would you recommend like a multi-part agreement, where you could have a pre-operational agreement, and then have one that goes just for the operations and thereafter? I mean, to expedite the initial agreement, as opposed to trying to bundle the entire thing in?
No, it can be done in two parts. I mean, it depends on how you want to do it, and it depends on the timing too, but you could do that.
Thank you.
And I think our third product is basically a monthly report through the town council. Is there anything else that I think is a-
Madam President? I'm sorry to interject into your, into your meeting, but one of the issues I think you ought to take a look at, not only pre but post, is security issues. And by that I mean, what role your police department is going to be playing in the facility, and what needs to be done there, and how those resources will be allocated, and what effect that's going to have on, on the town, and not only police but fire too. And I have to say that, based on my experience, that's been one of the more important issues that has confronted the town of Lincoln. And I do think it would be a good idea if that was discussed, not only, you know, during construction and things of that nature, but more importantly, when the facility is up and running. Because what's happened in the other community is, is it's kind of been an ad hoc thing. As situations have arisen, they've been taken care of. But I do think that it would have been better if, if it had been taken care of in a host community agreement. Lincoln doesn't have one, by the way.
I think, does Newport, Newport has one?
Newport, yes.
Okay, but that would be part of the host community agreement?
Correct, yes. I recommend you do that.
Okay, we're, we're still on number three. General discussion of procedures, goals, and objectives. So, I've tried to lay out the goals. We have deliverables that we need to have. We've identified those as recommend the host community agreement, and we can do that in two parts, a host community agreement pre-operational, and then one that's operational. And then recommendations on ordinance for gaming revenue allocation. And then certainly, another product of this committee is the monthly report. And I'd say the, between the host community agreement, it's in that priority, host community agreement, pre-operational, then operational, and then, then the ordinance for gaming revenue. Are we all in agreement?
Yes.
Consensus?
Well, there's only, so it would be, you could do it that way, have a HCA as a pre-op, and then another HCA as a post-op, but you want to get this all agreed upon relatively together, or you would wait for the post? Yeah, because I'm getting, I'm getting some of this stuff mixed up, because pre-op, before they even start anything, you want a host community agreement. And then you're saying, once they're in place, and once they're up and running, we want another one? Or you're saying, we're going to put the two, we're going to have one host community agreement, but it's going to be in two different parts?
That's the latter.
Okay, so we want to still get that one?
I think, I think as far as the pre-operational, it's so that we can put in place the part of the zoning ordinance that we passed, had two things that were included in, at the end of it, that said basically, we were going to include those two things in a host community agreement, if I can find it. I know it involved the building official, a payment for the building official, and that was one other thing. I just don't seem to have it with me right now.
What was, what was the first part that you said, the host community payments? Was that, was that what it was under?
Under the zoning ordinance that was passed-
Oh, yes, okay.
There were two items at the end of the ordinance-
Mm-hmm.
-that we added to the wording, remember?
Yep.
We had to add, like, as defined in the host community agreement.
I remember that, that's right.
And I think those two things were pre-operational-
Yeah.
-because I remember one of them had to do with the building inspector.
And was it the fact also that they could, was it, was it also that the Twin Rivers would pay for it?
Yeah.
Because that's, again, that's, and I think you brought that up, but again, when I'm looking at the host community agreements that I have seen, there's, some of these things are pre-op, like, you know, plans, like a host, host community payments, and they have certain things, you know, listed for that, the community impact fee, with transportation improvement, these are just some of the things that I've seen, and you've seen them too. They're not in all of the host community agreements, but those are some of the ones that I thought we might want to look at. And I thought, and one of them was for sure, police, fire, another one was water and sewer, which is not as clear as police and fire, but it was just some of the things that you were talking about, that, and it would, just as a paragraph in the host community agreement, and I'm assuming, I know that Chief Blakeney has talked to them already, so I'm, and I assume that the fire chief has as well, so they would be in more detail, but the host community agreement just kind of like lays it out and says, we have this in place, correct? It doesn't, it's not going to, and then, and then we'll have to talk to the two chiefs to find out what exactly they're doing? Is that, is that something that, that we should, we should be doing with this committee? Or is that something for town council or town administrator, or what?
Well, ultimately, it would be a recommendation to the town council.
Okay.
But the host community agreement, again, is a contract.
Yep.
And typically, what you'd see in the provisions is, is that it would require that a public safety plan be in place-
Okay.
-as approved by the police chief and the fire chief.
Okay.
And you can also go on to water and sewer and all of those-
Okay.
-other operating issues.
Whatever, yeah.
Yes.
So, I'm assuming each of those departments will, will, will take care of that? And then, in the host community agreement, we'll just say, well, we have the plan in place, and then the chief will have, is that, is that correct or not?
If there's not an approved plan-
Yep.
-and if the approved plan is not being adhered to, that would be a breach of the contract.
Okay. Okay.
So, are there any other goals that this committee should have?
Madam President, I would like to have in the committee that any time a fire, police, or ambulance go to that casino-
That, you're getting into details.
Yeah, but I mean-
It's not a goal, that's part of the task.
I am?
Your head of yourself is-
Yeah, well, I'm thinking into the future.
I know, that's great.
That's, that's wonderful, but let's wait to the next topic on the agenda.
We won't forget it, Randy.
Oh, no, we won't. They're going to pay for everything.
We won't forget, yeah. Okay, so we're all in, we're all in agreement that we want to move forward with the host community agreement, which brings us to the next item on the agenda.
Yeah.
Okay. Carolyn?
We are talking about one host community agreement that has both pre and post, right? We certainly don't need more complications.
Right. Thank you.
Well, actually, though, the one, the one thing is, is because the permitting process is in play on this, you're probably going to want to get to those issues first- -and, and reach some type of an agreement on those issues first, before proceeding on to the other post agreements, because, you know, they're already at the planning board, they've gotten master plan approval.
Okay, but the final item will be one.
Correct.
In the end, yes.
What we normally, I do a lot of contracts, what we normally do is, we have what they call a pre-construction contract, and that's talking about all the pre-operational stuff here, and then you have the main contract, they both are one, but you sign the pre-construction one early on, so you can get that, all that work done, and that just rolls into the main contract. So, you basically end up with one host agreement.
Makes sense? Very good.
I just also wanted to say, I don't know if it goes under the goals, but in the resolution, it also says, and any other issues deemed necessary regarding the casino. And I'm assuming that as we're going along, things might pop up, so, that we didn't know about, or, you know, it's like, oh, I didn't know that, and so I just want to, that would be something that we could put, that would be in here, that, oh, we need a specific goal or objective, as long as we've got that purpose there, that should guide us, right? So, that would be okay.
But what would, to have a goal or objective, it has to be specific.
Well, that's what I'm asking you, but I don't, but we don't know what the other issues might be.
Right, so you can't do-
Right, but I don't want to-
-generate a specific goal for that.
Right, but I don't want to just close it off.
We're not.
Okay, that's what I'm, just making sure, just like Randy's making sure, I'm making sure. So, because we've got this purpose, and because, because we've got it in there, we're all set, we're good with that.
Yeah, it's part of the resolution.
Yeah, okay.
But all I can do is define-
What we can.
What we can today.
Okay.
And set goals and priorities for those.
Okay.
Otherwise-
No, 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 we start at the beginning.
Okay. And we determined priority is basically the, as Mr. Edwards has mentioned, the pre-construction host community agreement to roll into the master host community agreement would be our first and second priority, and then last would be the recommendation on an ordinance. Next item on the agenda is the host community agreement, and I think discussion on topics to be included in establishing those priorities is what's, what's next. And then, set the task assignment on each, each topic. So, if we can, we've had some good ideas already to be included in this host community agreement. And I think we can maybe set two columns and say, what's, what's pre, and what's pre-operational, or pre-construction, and then what is operational. As Randy has mentioned, the AO, the administrative officer, would be a pre-construction topic. And I, we have the zoning ordinance that was passed, and part of that is a building permit. L under the ordinances for building permit, and that's for building official, and we can get consultants to do, expedite plan review, code review, permit issuance, and field inspections. So, I'll just put that under building permit, et cetera.
Roundabout, the detailed contract, would you state for the roundabout, who's paying for what?
That's already a separate agreement that's been signed.
Okay, but that would be- Okay, but that would be reflected someplace in the host agreement, wouldn't it? Don't we have a complete package of all of the things that...
We have a separate agreement.
Maybe we need an index to it, but...
May I make a suggestion?
Yes, totally.
For the, for the non-council members, perhaps if you saw the agreements that were entered into with the state in Twin River for the roundabout construction, that would bring you up to speed at, at where that is and where that project is going. But in connection with that, perhaps what might be helpful for the general public if there was a communications plan in place as to when construction was to take place and what the public could anticipate during that process might be helpful, too. And that's an appropriate way to enter into an agreement, I think, for that.
Communication plan, especially during pre-construction.
Correct.
Is a very good idea. But to add to our to-do list would be to get copies of the roundabout.
I actually have it with me.
Agreement. We can get that for you.
Yeah.
So we can put that on the list of things to get, we have provided the ordinance. Would it be a good idea to give them a copy of the comprehensive plan update that we did as well?
Yes.
Yep, comp plan update, the roundabout agreement that we signed with Rhode Island Department of Transportation, and then the one with, we signed with Twin Rivers. We've already passed out the ordinance that was passed.
It was just for the council members.
Did you get, did she give it to everyone?
I don't think so.
Okay.
Did you get one, Randy?
No.
Oh. All right, so...
Are they making copies?
If not, you know what, you take, I, I can, we'll get, we'll put that on the list for you.
Get zoning ordinance update?
Because I only got one, so we're just like, we'll get, we'll put that on the list for you, okay?
Sorry. We're getting a list of, of things that need to be provided. And, okay, so, maybe to bring you up to speed, the town council has already approved an agreement between the town, Tivitan, and Rhode Island Department of Transportation regarding the roundabout. And we in turn have signed an agreement also with Twin Rivers so that they construct the roundabout. So those documents, we, we approved those, and those have been signed and given to the Department of Transportation. We have, the town council has approved updates to the comprehensive community plan to add the Twin Rivers, a gaming, casino and gaming and entertainment facility into the comprehensive plan, as well as updated our zoning ordinance to also include a casino and gaming and entertainment overlay district. So the town council has been busy. Are those the only three things that we've done?
The road abandonments.
We've also done the road abandonments for Six Rod Way, subject to an indemnification agreement, which we do have.
Yes.
We've also, no, there was one other thing that we did. Oh, actually, it was the state. The state has, has a couple of bills, I believe, a bill to update the state enabling legislation for this, to update it for the H-5800, to update it for the, to reflect the November 8th election, that it's now, it was proposed, now it's approved by the voters. So that happened, or that's at the state, as well as, I believe, Tony has mentioned, this master agreement is in the works at the state level, I believe, to include Lincoln and Tivitan as part of the master agreement that the state has with Twin Rivers.
That's correct, yes.
So there's things that happen at the state level, and then there's things that happen at the town level, and I think that's all I remember doing so far. Was there anything else? I don't think there was anything else on the list. I know that the planning board is proceeding with their process. The town council doesn't get involved in that. They did their work for updates to the comp plan, as well as zoning ordinance, and provided that to the council. But as far as the planning goes, the master plan, that's all within their sphere of influence. So they're doing their job, they're doing their work. And we don't, we don't interfere in their, their job. Yes, Carolyn?
I've got another question. Where does the sewer for Hurst Avenue come in?
That actually is part of the planning process. The sewer is, is a separate entity. It's the Tivitan wastewater district. It's a quasi-governmental agency that's separate from the town, it's not part of the town.
But this, but the Twin Rivers people have agreed that they are doing this? I mean...
The Tivitan wastewater district is part of the planning process. They will review the plans that are presented to the planning board.
Would that have to be in this agreement, or that's already taken care of?
Similar to the Tivitan North, I see the North Tivitan, is it North Tivitan Water Districts?
That's what you want to ask us, I know.
That's involved in the water side.
But does that have to be in this agreement, or that's already taken care of?
They're a separate entity, they're a quasi.
Right.
So they, you might want to have them outside of it.
I guess the question Jesus is asking is, does that have to be included in this, or that's something we can pass over?
It, it actually, if you look at it, if you're a homeowner in the North End and you have water and sewer, does the town get involved in that? No.
Right.
The homeowner works with the Tivitan wastewater district, they work with the North Tivitan Fire District, and they pay their, they get bills, they pay their bills for their water, they pay their bills for the sewer.
Yeah, I guess my question is, I thought there was a commitment.
If, if I may, it's correct, they're a separate entity, so they couldn't be a part of the host community agreement. However, the host community agreement could mandate that there be adequate provisions for water and sewer and even, you know, these other services that we're talking about that are not provided by the town.
Wouldn't that be part of the planning board process?
It would, yes, but...
And the plan approval?
It, it would, yes, but if that's part of the post-agreement, it gives the town an added tool for enforcement to make sure that the agreements made at the planning board level are adhered to going forward.
So in the host community agreement, you just make a statement, you don't get into the...
Correct.
The specifics of it, that would be something the planning board would do, correct?
Yes.
When we, and so we're just protecting the town.
Yes.
Okay.
But if there's any issues going forward.
Yep.
In addition to what you have, your ordinance provisions and everything else, you also have these contractual provisions, too, which sometimes are more easily enforceable going forward.
Okay.
That's how you keep them honest.
So would that be under pre-construction or operational? Water and...
Post.
Operational?
Correct, yes.
So Twin Rivers is going to be responsible for sewer and water down Hurst Lane, part of their agreement?
Well, I'm not, I'm not saying that, I'm just saying that whatever they come up with at the planning board level, you know, whatever they have to do, that they have to live up to their commitments.
So at no time they agreed to do that, then, up to this point?
I don't know.
I don't know either. So, but we'll put it in there, just in case.
That's part of pre.
Good.
You have to talk about it.
What's part of pre?
Oh, making sure that they, if Hurst Lane was discussed and attached to drink sewer water down there, that they should keep up, if they agreed it, if they agreed to it, we're going to make sure that they live up to it.
I'm pretty sure that they did, because I'm remembering it from the planning, planning board meeting.
Just add in, that's all.
Yeah.
Right?
Yes, but I think what the host, again, and this is where it gets confusing, the ones that I've seen, the host community agreements have said, have kept it on a general basis, and they would say water slash sewer, and it's a little paragraph. And so then that is something that, okay, so if we've got that and the town council is saying yes, it's not that we're going to get into all the contracts and all the details, the planning board would do that, if that, if that's correct. Same thing with the police and the fire and the safety, it's like, we are saying that in the host community, because you've read some of them, right? So they just little paragraphs to say, okay, heads up, this is what, you know, this is part of the agreement, you're going to take care of this. They're not going, otherwise, the contract, the host community agreement would be this high. So it's just, it's just like little things we're saying in the host community agreement, okay, this is what we want to make sure that the town is protected this way, with police, fire, with water, sewer. And then, we can either decide, you know, I, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, that it goes to the quasi, well, it goes to the planning board, and the other ones that will inform us, I would assume, because we, so that we're working together. Is that right?
Yes, but the contract gives you, the host community agreement gives you another layer.
Exactly, exactly, because then we can just say, hey, wait a minute, what about this thing right here? And then we've got these layers saying, yes, it was agreed upon this way, and it was...
Correct.
Okay. Got it?
Yeah, pretty much.
It makes it easier, because otherwise, we would go crazy with contracts.
Yeah, you're right, and I just want to make sure that Twin Rivers is on the hoof for everything that's...
I know.
If they're going to, if they give us whatever, a dollar, and we're going to spend a dollar five getting it back, it doesn't make any sense, I want all of it.
I, no, I got you, Randy.
All right, so, can, so I have, under operational, I have water and I have sewer. Are you saying that you want water and sewer under pre-construction as well?
Is that what you were recommending?
No.
I didn't think so.
Okay, so...
I would like to see it under pre-construction, make sure they're going to do it. I mean, I know they need it for them, but we got to make sure they just don't leave a mess.
Well, they can't get a C.O.
They can't operate.
For their building.
Well, water and sewer. Well, let's make sure that they...
Well, they can't get a certificate of occupancy without that. Those are mandatory items.
Okay, good, let's get that, and let's go back to this fire stuff they, they got to pay for. Every time a fire truck goes there, they have to pay the bill 100%, man hours, whatever it takes, same thing with ambulance, same thing with police.
That's...
I just want to make sure.
I know, I know.
Because they're going to be there quite often.
All right, yeah.
If they're not spending our money for them to go over there, that's all.
Yeah, we, okay.
We'll get back to it.
Yeah.
All right, so, so we're just doing topics. So operational, we have police, and we have fire as public safety. I think under pre-construction, we also have to have police, because of the police details that we have there, I don't think we need, do we need fire on pre-construction? I don't, I don't think so.
Don't they have to approve?
There, there are some instances when you need fire personnel down there.
Like inspections and stuff?
Inspections and things of that nature.
Would that come under inspections, though?
Yes.
Yes.
Your bill, House 5800.
5800.
That is, is going before House Finance, it hasn't been set up yet. We just started, and House Finance getting back to individual bills, they've actually finished, gone through the budget, pretty much.
Excellent.
So we're getting back to that. So this week, we've got a bunch of bills come up, it's not on the list.
Okay. Okay, any other topics that you've seen in, in host community agreements you'd like to include? Chris?
There was a note on here about local hiring for, like, local contractors, thought that was kind of a good one. Yeah, something to just add in there.
Local hiring, under pre-construction, yeah.
And local vendors?
Yeah.
Local companies?
Yes.
I don't know if it's worth it, I, I put down a list of, I just counted them, there's 15 of these things that were in the host community agreements, is it worth it to just say it?
It's worth it.
Just to list them?
It's worth it.
Huh?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I was going crazy trying to figure, you know, go do all these things, and I was like, just make the list. Okay, so the very, the first one is definitions, and some of these are just boilerplates, that, you know, from one host community to another, it looked like the same, but then there were others, it looked like we had to zero in on it. So I'm just putting the list down, okay? So it was payment to town and paying, payment to the town and the planning of the project. And there's the payment to the town, Randy, I think, oh, no, I, I'm sorry, that was not about that, that was about the general payment to the town. Annual tax payment, community impact fee, host community payments, meals and motor tax revenues, permit fees and late payment fees, the construction jobs and the permanent jobs, transportation improvement, town services, and the town services, and that's where, that was a general thing, but that's where they had the police and the fire under that. Then there was a one on responsible gambling, town obligations, agreements that were not transferable, and the, oh, the, the choice of law, the, the ones I was looking at was Massachusetts, so it's just to say that it has to be the Massachusetts state law, so I assume it's just saying it's Rhode Island state law, and indemnification. So all of those, those, those are no surprises, I, I would think, right?
Yes.
Okay.
We don't have an excise tax in, in Rhode Island.
Okay, and it, some of these things, they don't necessarily, they're not the high priority for the host community agreements, I would think, but at least some of them were in there, okay? And I can give you, I don't know, it's Leona or Nancy, if you want that list, or not. Anyhow, the, the other thing that I came up across in the, and I, again, I'm just throwing this stuff out, because it might or might not be important, or I might be stepping into a hornet's nest right now, but one of them I saw was limitations on expansion, limitations on growth, both physical growth of the, of the buildings and growth of the slot machines, limitations on the sale and transfer. So if this, if this entity ever gets sold, there are limitations on that, if you want to put in, if you want to put the limitations on that, and the limitations on partners' purchase of adjoining land. So it's basically trying to contain them. And again, I'm not sure if that's something that we want to get into, but it's, I saw it, so I thought, okay, I'd rather, I'd rather put it out there.
Probably be under operational.
Oh, I, yeah, I guess my head is thinking a different way, I was just thinking of priorities, and I'm thinking, they, the ones I saw was right up front, to put limitations, so it's just like, you guys are not expanding, you can't expand, or if you do expand, and if they put in, want to put in more tables or more slot machines, then the percentage goes up for the town, but that's something, I'm not sure if that's something that's, that's the state.
It's all managed by the state license.
Everything?
Yes.
Even the, the growth?
Yeah, they can't do anything without the expansion of the state license.
Okay, so, do we have any say in the state, in whether or not it would be expanded?
I have no idea.
We mean Tivitan.
But I know the state license dictates, you know, what they have and what they can have, and they can't just go and add...
Right, they can't add table games.
No.
So, can I ask a gentleman there at the state? So based on, say, the square footage, which they said roughly be 2,000 square feet, based on that, then the number of tables could not be increased, or there must be a ratio thing there with the licensing, don't?
It's got nothing to do with the, the square footage of the facility, it has nothing to do with the number of games and slot machines they are authorized to have.
Well, but in an area, we're restricted to the size of the building, it's supposed to be interior space somewhere in 80,000 square feet.
Yeah, but they've already agreed, I think they have like 32 table games, or something like that, and I forget how many slot machines, but they're only a lot, a lot, so many, that's it, they can't go beyond those.
Let me ask a question.
Unless they go back to the state.
To the state, right?
And, yeah, they, they have to go back to the state and they go back to the town.
Oh, then they would have to go back to the town as well? Oh, then they would have to go back to the town as well, okay.
Because it's part of your agreement.
That's part of the master agreement?
It was also part of the state agreement.
So is that, so is, if it's part of a state agreement, does it also, is it redundant to also make it part of the host community agreement?
I think what you need to do first, and Jay, I'm going to have you do this, explain what the relationship is between the state and Twin River.
Twin River manages the license. The state of Rhode Island holds the license. Twin River is only the manager.
And technically, they're, correct me if I'm wrong, they're renting?
Yes, they pay, they pay a management fee to, to manage that license.
So if, if Twin River wanted to put more tables or, they would have to go for a town referendum. The town would have to just like make up their first.
I'm not sure, but I know they'd have to go back to the state. Because the state owns the license. They never leaves possession of the state. That's why it's a constitutional issue.
Okay, so that's why, so some of that, what I, some of the things that I just read off about the limitations, I wasn't sure if that, is that something that is?
There are some limitations that would be permissible at the local level.
Okay.
But.
I don't think increasing table games or, or adding slots would be allowed.
Okay.
Yeah, the, the thing is, is that this is technically a lottery. That's how it fits in the constitution, and that's the, the case to say.
Okay.
But there are some lim, um, physical limitation issues that are appropriate at the local level. But some of the other stuff is really, really controlled by the state.
Yeah, and I guess this, it can be confusing because it's like, what is controlled by the state and what is not? And that's why I said we would just throw it out there and see what's controlled or not. But it sounds also, from what you just said, that sometimes, some of these things, this town can say something about it.
That's correct.
Okay.
But not others.
Right, yeah, I think that you said that, okay.
That license isn't, uh, the management isn't hot and finite. They don't have a preference. We do it every five years, 10 years, they have to give a, you know, what are they doing?
They made an agreement with the state for both these, these licensed locations, and I don't know what the deal is. I haven't seen it. But there is, there is.
A linear.
There's a term.
Term, yeah, I was going to say.
Yeah, if I'm not mistaken, it's 10 years.
I would think that sounds reasonable, yeah, with the other agreements.
Okay.
I think this one is to 2030.
That's what I thought, yeah.
Yeah, no, better put that in there.
2030.
No, 2030, the year 20.
2030, okay, you're talking what then, what, 17, 13, 13 years, 13, it's a 13, if you know.
Well, they're going to open, they open in 18, it'll be 12 years.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
The license, that, we'd be managers then, managers of it, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, right.
12 years, okay.
Well, I'll throw something else out as well. Licenses and hours of operation. Is that state or is that town?
The town is the.
That's town.
The town acts as board of licensing for liquor licenses, so that's within the town council's purview.
Okay, and also the hours of operation?
That goes along with the license.
Okay.
So the license.
But that's, that's would be a town council thing, but we could still recommend something?
Well, license, you can if you want, but licensing and hours of operation.
Uh huh.
And all of those other licensing issues, the vicuroling license, the food and everything else, entertainment license, that resides with the town council.
Okay.
I don't know if there is some type of a restriction on some of the things that they do. I know Lincoln has some. There's some things they can and can't do based on Providence venues. I don't, I haven't seen anything for this venue on that, but that is definitely a local issue.
Okay.
Is there an hour of operation right now on the table?
I don't know.
Is there an hour of operation?
They haven't come before us for any type of licensing.
No, I haven't seen it.
It's all by licensing. That's something that the town council would have to take up.
So the town council would say they got to shut down at 10 o'clock, like they did to me.
Technically, you could, yes.
Technically, you could. Hey, I'm only going to stick it out there once in a while. It's good for the hoos, it's good for the gander.
Wait a minute, you're shut down at 9 o'clock, not 10.
There we go.
Okay. There you go. Got to read your license.
I bet.
So listen, I think you might want to check that. The operations might be through the license.
On your list, did you have rewards for your guests' loyalty programs?
No, I've seen it in a couple of HCA's, but. Okay, it was, it was rewards, what, what?
Frequent guests.
Yeah.
Royalty programs.
Yeah, yeah.
They would support a lot of them, local businesses to.
Yeah.
Do these things.
I think it depends on whether they have those type of programs today, if they offered them at Twin River or. I'm not a visitor to Newport or.
Madam President.
Lincoln.
Tony, could, could you and Jay discuss and open what you guys just talked about, so these guys could hear. They were trying to hear what you guys were saying.
I, I beg your pardon. Hours of operation in Lincoln are by ordinance. So that's something that the town council would have to address. Licensing issues, type of licensing, hours of operation. That's all by the town council, it's by ordinance.
No, Jay, did you say that? Twin River, Lincoln is 24 hours?
I think I saw something recently that just, they just want it to be 24 hours.
It is, yes.
You know, if the license for Tiburon is going to be a 24-hour license, or?
It depends what you, you decide as a council.
Okay.
Lincoln approved, I, I know I'd seen something from.
Yeah.
The Twin River Lincoln.
That's not a state issue. That's a local issue.
I just wanted to be on the same page and make sure.
Correct.
This license we have is not, you know, we put this thing up and we have no say after that, so I just wanted to make sure.
I think you have a lot of say.
Yeah, okay.
Those operational issues are considered to be local issues, particularly hours of operation.
And the recommendation would be in an ordinance rather than just the normal vicuroling event license, liquor license. And actually, it'd be multiples.
Could you give us a copy of what Lincoln's got?
Yes, and it may be in this, in the reference materials, but I, I think that's something that's appropriate for an ordinance because state law contemplates that the local community will have ordinances to that effect. So I, I do think that's something, you can put it in the host community agreement, but you really also need an ordinance too.
Okay. Now, are there any, any? Now, the state holds the, the gambling license, so there's no restrictions on the gambling license other than the number of table games, the number of slots, that type thing.
Yeah. And the location.
Ah, that's right.
They just can't, they just can't pull up stakes and go to Bristol. It's been set for this location.
All right, so the state sets the, the location, the number of slot machines, the number of table games at each location, okay.
Look at tab C.
C.
Tab C.
Where? I got it, where?
What are we looking at?
Uh, section, section 161 dash 3. Application for additional hours of operation. That's just for the vicuroling license. There is another provision for the alcohol beverage license. I'll get that and send it to you all.
That's the Lincoln agreement.
They just did it in ordinance. They don't have a host community agreement. You'll also notice they enacted an ordinance on detailed police officers.
So what, which would be better to have, a host community agreement or an ordinance?
Can have both.
You can put it in the host community agreement, but you absolutely have to have an ordinance when it comes to licensing.
Okay. All right, is there anything else? I know this is, I know you guys have read this entire manual, right? Very good.
Especially tab C.
Good answer. Is there anything else that we would like to include in this pre-construction? I know you had your list. You probably want to photocopy that. Which of those would be in the pre-construction host agreement?
Definitions.
Yeah.
Payment to town and the planning project, so that's, they both had that. Annual tax payment, community impact fee, host community payments. Then meals and motor tax, I wouldn't think that's pre-construction.
Meal and hotel tax, that's governed by the state, right?
No, I thought you.
8%, you give your piece.
Yeah, no, I thought you were talking about that's.
Basic to sales tax.
Post op.
So we, I don't think we need that in a host community agreement, right?
Oh, these were what was, were, were in host community agreements?
That's Massachusetts.
Right, but still, even if we're saying the whole, the state is giving us a certain percent.
You get 1%.
Yeah, so, oh, okay, there's a special, yeah, wait a minute. There's also a special, a special phrase to protect the town. No, it's not indemnification. It's in case.
You're talking about a slippage clause.
Uh, that's what it sounds like, but that's not what it was called. Well, you want to explain it? It's if, if we don't get something from the state, we will get it from the Twin Rivers.
Currently in Lincoln, there's a slippage clause on the, the table game revenue.
Mm-hmm.
If it doesn't reach a certain, if it goes below a certain percentage.
Yeah.
Twin River makes it up.
That's it.
Yes.
But they didn't call it slippage. There was, there was another special name for it, but I can, I can find it out.
It is, it's a, it's a fancy name, and for some reason, I always remember slippage because it's easy to remember.
Well, as soon as you said slippage, I was like, that was it.
Particularly with the, the things that happened to me every now and then.
Okay, so is that something that could go into host community agreement or not? Because it's, it's, so we're making a host community agreement with Twin Rivers, but then the state is here telling us certain things as well. So is that something, that's where it's getting confusing.
Yeah, the, the slippage clause is in, in the state statute. That's the first thing.
Yeah.
There is a, a form of a slippage clause for Tiburon because there's a minimum that you collect on this.
Mm-hmm.
It's going to be difficult, I think, on taxation issues because that's governed by, by state statute that applies equally, equally to all of the communities in the state.
Okay.
So I think we might have some difficulty enforcing that.
Yep.
It's not part of your state agreement, though.
Pardon?
You get your, you have your own taxes and fees that the town assesses.
Yeah.
Which are worth about like 1.1 million dollars, I recall. Then you have 3 million dollars, give or take, which is the gaming revenue, and that is not guaranteed by Twin River. Guaranteed by state. The state would step in, and it comes out of the state's share to make up the difference.
That's, that's correct.
Give or take, but there's no give or take.
I know, I, I don't remember the number exactly.
Okay, but not.
There's not a give or take, but I'm trying to recall.
Oh, okay.
It was like 3 million dollars, give or take. It was some amount in there. I don't recall, I don't recall exactly what it was.
Well, they've been, we've been hearing 3 million over the last, since this.
Yeah, it's 3 million, but there's, there's.
We'll take.
There's an exact number that's in the agreement.
Right.
They don't recall exactly what.
But it could be more than that, if that's been told as well.
It could be.
This could be, but it can't be less.
It can't be less, and the state's portion will, the, the town's portion will be made up by the state.
Yes.
And that's, that's in the agreement.
Right. So it was just that, I just want to make sure that's Twin River, or whoever's going to get at least that 3.
Plus your 1. something million in taxes and fees.
We don't have any control over that, they do.
They? Well, no, you do.
They have to take, pay property tax. That's what he's talking about, the property tax.
I'm talking about the 3 million bucks.
That's, that's what the state.
That's right, but we could get more than that.
There's, there's actually a couple of streams of revenue that'll be coming in.
Yeah.
And I just want to make sure you all understand that the meal tax is a, is a state tax. That's actually outside the state master contract and also a local control because it applies statewide. That's under Title 43, Chapter 3, so that's segregated out. The taxes that you would get in the ordinary course under your tax assessment, the, the real estate tax, the tangible personal property tax, which includes equipment too.
Right.
That's another revenue stream. That's local. That goes on what your tax rates are and what the assessed valuation will be. Then you have the revenue coming in from the, from the table games and the slots.
Right.
That's your third stream of revenue. That's the 3 million dollars.
Right, and plus that 1.1 is the meal tax and?
No.
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 Your property taxes, your fees, all, all the stuff that the town will directly bill them for is in the 1.1 something.
Okay.
Okay, the sales tax, hotel and, and meals tax is completely separate, and I don't believe there's been anything determined for that. That's your 1% of the 8% that the state assesses.
I'll take it. Okay, so that's what the 1% comes in, comes into what, the state's guarantee?
We have a state sales tax.
Of what, their, their, their operating cost fiscal year, or how, how is that?
No, no, it's, it's how much they sell in, in liquor and food, and then how much they, they make, they bring in for the hotel. If they charge $100, it's $108.
Yeah.
Is the fee. The town would get $1 from that $100.
Okay, I see. But you mentioned about the state, about 8%, basically, that's what.
From meals and hotel.
We as a town then would take the 1% off the state, is that what you said?
The state would reimburse you the 1%.
Okay, that's what 1% comes in.
Right now, we don't have any hotels in town.
Correct.
We have a bunch of restaurants, we have no hotels.
So that, that 1% is the third line that he was talking about.
Correct. That 1% was the third, was the third.
Was the, was the 13th, yes.
So we get the 1 million to 3 million, and the 1% to you.
So when it comes to meal, meal and sales tech, that's already a pass-through to the state. That's not something that would be in this agreement. So, again, Rhode Island's a little bit different than Massachusetts, so. What else was on?
Permit fees, permit fees and late payment fees, construction jobs and permanent jobs, which is kind of what you were talking about, transportation improvement, town services, which they refer to police and fire, yeah. There's something about responsibility, responsible gaming, and I, I'm almost positive that they've already talked about this, that they, and I think it's in the Lincoln one as well, that any, but people, for those of people who have difficulties gambling, they have a program for it. Then there were town obligations. That probably should go into the pre-construction, what the town obligations are. Agreement not, not transferable, that would be later on. We wouldn't have to worry about that. And the indemnification, you know, this is where it gets sketchy again. But is that a boilerplate that you're?
It depends on what you're indemnifying.
Yeah, so I'm not a lawyer, so I, I, you know, I just, I just was seeing things that had the similar, same subtitle. So it was just like, okay, you know, I mean, that's all it was. It was just looking at it, not understanding all of what it was saying, but it was like, okay, we got to talk about indemnification.
If I may, there's, there's already two indemnification agreements in place.
Yeah.
One is for the abandonment of the roads.
Okay.
To the extent that there's any lawsuits that are filed, and the town is a party to that.
Mm-hmm.
The second one is, if you take a look in the agreements for that roundabout.
Yeah.
The, uh, Twin River will indemnify the town if there are any lawsuits filed in connection with the construction or any other issues involved with the roundabout construction. That's something I insisted on, that be put in.
Okay.
What, what did you mean by non-transferable?
Oh, that comes later. There was something in, in, in a couple of the HCA agreements that's saying if the company wanted to, they could only sell or lease, lease the, the building or sell it to somebody else only if it was agreed upon by the town. But my guess is, because it's a state contract, it would have to be agreed by the state. Is that correct? In other words, they can't just.
I have to see it. My guess would be it would have to go through the state.
That's what I would think, right, because that's the. Because that's the agree-
They hold the license.
And then you hold the master agree, yeah, okay.
The existing master agreement has a non-transferable clause.
Unless there's a agreement. It's got to be agreed, yeah, okay.
Yeah, we don't want to duplicate things that are already taken care of at the state level.
Right. Okay.
All right. So we'll need that list copied and added. Well, I think you've learned a lot tonight.
That's good.
But it's not all clear. Not as much, though. It is for you?
It will be.
Yeah, we keep working on it.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards, for bringing your estate expertise to the table because-
It's just a contract.
Just a contract.
Just a contract.
Okay. So if we're going to focus on the pre-construction part of the host community agreement, then we probably should go through and do assignments. And I'm just going down the list. I'm not sure definitions. We probably should leave that to the end. We have, not in any particular order, but I think communication plan. That's important in this pre-construction process. You mentioned local hiring, local vendors. When it comes to the actual construction, I think that's where we run into the, as Mr. Blow mentioned, the administrative officer, the building official. As part of the zoning ordinance, we referred the two items. Actually, it was K and L to the host agreement. And those deal with pre-construction. So any, it would be any type of, I wonder how we could categorize that? Because it's like the administrative officer, we want to maybe add that. The building official, the inspections, any extra specific efforts that are done on the application review, which would be the AO, any, the planning lawyer would come under that. The application review, the administrative officer and the planning board solicitor. Just making a note. As far as the building permit, that would be the building official. Permits and inspections.
Do you think it would be, do you think it'd be wise to put the AO for Monday? So we can discuss that on Monday to see if the council agrees that we should hire-
Next Monday?
Next Monday? Put it on the agenda and discuss it? Because if this project's going to be moving forward, we definitely need an AO to sign off.
Wouldn't you want to ask the planning board?
No. I don't want, I would rather not have the-
But the planning board is the one that supervises the AO.
Yeah, but it's okay to go with the planning board, but we definitely need an AO that can handle what's going to happen over there. And we don't-
No, but, no, but don't you think that the planning board should be?
I, I, we're, actually, we're off topic, so why don't we discuss that?
Well, can we put it on for a discussion for Monday?
You can put it on for discussion for Monday night at the town council meeting. It still would have to be in this if it's agreed to. But at minimum, we have the building official, the permit fees and inspections. And wasn't there something about expedited review?
Yeah, there was a lot of talk about that.
And that's, again, going, I think, into the planning board.
Yeah, I don't, I don't want to just jump and say no with the planning board because I don't really know. I just want to make sure that we have all the right stuff.
No, okay, so I guess I'm getting mixed up because I'm not sure where you're going with, with, are you trying, are you trying to do host community agreement and putting all of this stuff in the host community agreement? Is that what you're trying to do?
That's what we did in the ordinance. We said it would be documented in the host community agreement. Remember, with these two items?
Yes, 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 yes. But are you trying, because I assume you've read some of the host community agreements, right?
Yes, I have.
Okay, so, so some of them just have it in a very quick paragraph. So is that where you're going with, to try to put these things in a, like a, you know, a, that would be under the planning? I would assume that you would say that, you know, the, the Twin Rivers? I'm just asking because I'm not sure where you're going. That the Twin Rivers would have, it says, it says administrative officer just for the Twin Rivers and a building inspector, building, is that what, is that what you're saying or not? Because I'm getting it mixed up. What, what you're saying, you want a specifically, an AO for the Twin Rivers, which will go to the town council. But when you talk about the, the roundabout, the building permits and the inspections, what are you, what are you trying to do?
I'm trying to be in compliance with the ordinance.
Can I say that, that zoning ordinance? I passed one, I passed it out to you guys.
Just as an FYI, tomorrow night, the Twin River application is on for the planning board meeting. They're meeting at the middle school on this, so.
On this very thing? And what, and what?
The Twin, the Twin River preliminary plan application is, is on. And it is set down for a, set down for the public hearing. I doubt that there's going to be a vote, but I just wanted to let you know that that's where they are on this thing. They're moving ahead, so.
Yeah.
Chris, my, my idea for the AO.
Yep.
For, just for the casino is, because there's so many other things going on in this town.
Yes.
And the casino, it's going to be mountains of paperwork coming through.
Right.
And we got to, if we have one person-
No, no, I understand that, what I was, but, but the AO goes under the direction of the planning board. So what you're suggesting is that they, correct me if I'm wrong, the planner and the AO is one person that we're going to hire.
Correct.
But on top of that, you want an AO that's hired by Twin Rivers. But it would still report to the planning board, it's not going to report to us.
Correct.
So that's what you're suggesting? And that, yeah. Okay, so, so that would be, you, you want that as a recommendation coming from the subcommittee?
Through the council.
Right. But then the town council should, then, but the planning board, the, the planning board is, is, is missing there. Unless, unless it's the town council says to the planning board, hire an AO. Is that what, it's specific to the Twin Rivers? Is that what, is that what you're suggesting? Is that something we do?
If it's legal, if it's, if it's-
But that's what you're suggesting, right? Not like, not necessarily, it wouldn't necessarily be a full-time, it would be a half-
No, just until the casino's finished.
No, I mean, it wouldn't necessarily be a full-time position, it might not be.
It probably will be, but I don't care if it is or not because we're going to have-
No, no, because it's like, it might be an AO slash planner that's, that's-
It very well could be.
Okay. But I guess my question is, so if, if subcommittee is saying, we'd recommend that, and then, but it just seems like the planning board is out of the loop here. So is that something that the Twin, the, the Twin Rivers, the town council says to the planning board, please either consider having an AO planner?
Well, I think it's, it's, the, the, I think the way you have to look at it is it would be more in the nature of a consultant who would perform the AO function for this discrete application.
Mm-hmm.
So you really have to do an RFP for the whole thing and, and get it going from there. And then you'd have input from the planning board that way.
Well, I guess what I'm asking is, you know, where's this, so it's coming from here, but it, but it's like, it goes to the planning board? It goes to the town council? Because the planning board is the one, they're the ones that have the AO. So, and they, and my guess is that they would, they would, they would welcome it, given all the work that they've got. That's what I'm thinking. I'm just wondering is, you know, is it, because we were very careful about not stepping on toes. So is it that something that we can say to the planning board, would you consider this? Or is it, we go to the town council and say, we want the planning board to do such and such? I have no idea.
And, and, and that's why I'm saying.
Yeah.
If you'd listen, is this isn't a topic for the town council meeting. He's going to put it on the agenda and we can discuss all this.
No, but this is what I'm asking.
We can discuss this at a town council meeting. We don't need to discuss the wherewithal of all this at this meeting.
Okay.
And how it interacts with the planning board and all that can be discussed. It's a topic he brought up.
Yeah, I understand that.
But if he wants to take action beforehand, then he needs to bring it to the town council.
Okay. And my, my is more to ask the solicitor. That's what I'm asking. And I understand what Randy is saying. What I'm asking is, the town solicitor, which way does it go? That's all.
Which way does it go where?
Does it?
Actually, the town council makes the AO appointment.
Yes. At the recommendation of the planning board.
Yeah, and then you get input from the planning board.
Okay.
So I think that if the town council, and, and my suggestion would be, this would be in the nature of a consultant because it's going to be part-time.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
And, and that would be the terms to it. So that's going to have to go for an RFP.
Yep.
And then there'd be input from the planning board in that process.
An RFP from the town council?
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Similar to how we have the RFP, the advertisement for an AO slash planner.
Right.
So it's part of the town council process. So if Randy wants to bring it up, he can bring that up.
I'm not questioning that. I'm not questioning that.
As an item for the town council on Monday night.
But the way that it's, it's happened in the past is it's been a town council appointment. There has been input from the planning board.
Mm-hmm. That's correct. Yeah, we wouldn't necessarily, we don't do the appointment without their input.
I would just say, it would just take the pressure off everything else that's going on.
I, I think they would welcome it. I was questioning the process, which I do think is relevant.
Okay. So for pre-construction, I think, do you want to each take a section, a topic and review the items?
Yeah.
Different agreements? Do you have the Lincoln agreement?
Well, Lincoln, they said, didn't have a host agreement.
Lincoln doesn't have a host community.
Yeah.
Does Newport do?
Yes, it does. Newport's is very good. They don't have anything really pre-construction, but it's, at least in my opinion. The ones, I read the Newport one was like the most relevant to us because it's all Rhode Island.
Yeah, I did read the West Warwick and that was specific, that was too specific for tribal activities.
Yeah. Newport one was pretty good.
Yeah. Okay. So I have, let's see. If we can agree on topics, I had communication plan, local hiring, local vendors slash local vendors. Police. I think that involves the details and during the pre-construction. And then impact fees. Building permit fees.
Did that already establish your building permit fees? Already, a whole host of costs and whatever.
Actually, that might be correct, right? So how about, that would be building inspections.
And you're, I'm assuming, because it's a major project, you're going, they're going to use controlled construction, which means the architects and engineers are responsible for overseeing everything and certify that the project is done for their certified drawings.
And there would be no inspections?
There'd be inspections. Neil and his team would do their regular inspections, but the architects and engineers or the professionals are required to sign off.
Okay.
It comes under the Round Building Code. Special inspection is the certification by professionals.
Okay, that's not specific to impact fees.
No, it's an impact fee, you're talking about inspections.
Inspection fees, okay.
Yes. That doesn't pose a challenge, I think, as the architects and engineers will bear that.
I mean, isn't it just a statement that was in the other saying that the Twin Rivers will, will be responsible for all of those, those fees? Isn't that all? But, I mean, that's, that's what, a lot of this stuff was just boilerplate. It was just saying that Twin Rivers is responsible for this, for that, for the inspection, the building fees, for any-
Yeah, it was like a generic.
Yeah.
That's correct, yes.
It was like a boilerplate. And it was, that's all it was, that they're going to take, they're going to take it on because they need to get the, they need to keep the thing rolling. And so we, and they recognize that the town does not have enough personnel so that they would take care of that.
Correct.
Okay. So that's just in a, you know, that's just in a couple of paragraphs.
And some of them, it's listed in the recitals, the-
Yeah.
The givens before they get into the other parts.
There you go. Okay. So let's go with communication plan, local hiring, local vendors, police, impact fees, building permit slash fees and inspections would be number six. And then I think we can call it number seven would be like application to match the ordinance, application review. Okay? That make sense? Okay, so who wants to volunteer for which? George?
I've done some re, a little bit of reading on the building permits and those type of things. Yeah, be willing to do that, the permits and then inspections.
Okay.
I can report back what, what some of these other folks have done. That doesn't mean we have to necessarily, you know, copy them or whatever, but give us some insight. We can make our own logical, hopefully logical conclusions for Tiburon.
Yep.
We can do that. The building permits and permits and inspections.
Carolyn, Chris?
The hiring.
Yep.
And the local vendors.
Yep.
I'll do the public announcements.
Communication plan.
There you go. Everybody likes to hear what's going on, right?
Very good.
Instead of at the coffee shop.
Randy, you want to take police?
Absolutely.
I know you'd like that. I'll take application review. Impact fees.
Yep.
I'll take police and fire if you don't, if you want.
Fire was under inspections.
Oh, okay. I'll stay with police then.
Because inspections would include fire, building, mechanical, electrical, dental, whatever. Ventilation? There's three. Plumbing, plumbing, mechanical and electrical. And then building. And then the fire. Why don't we start with those to begin with? Anything else on that, Chris?
No, I was thinking of something else. At a certain point, we have to have people come in here and talk to us about what they've got. And I, it's not clear to me when that would be a good way to do it, but we need some scheduling done. That should take some time.
I think that's next on the agenda.
Yeah, I, oh, I thought that was scheduling for the meetings. Well, that would be part of the meeting.
Yep.
Yeah. You know, I, and, and I guess the other thing I wanted to also bring up is to have a time, I don't know if it should be at the beginning of the meetings, but to get people to ask questions. And I don't know how you want to do that. Like, but to, I mean, we, we wanted to have people getting input, so that might be a way to. And again, I don't know how it would work. It could be like, it could take- It could be like, it could take ten minutes, you could, but you know, if it's, we could leave it open. If the, and if there's a lot of people, we could limit it, time-wise. But I know Twin Rivers, they would probably, it would be good to have them, uh, at some point. I was also thinking that representative Edwards, at some point, if you could do another overview. But it might be better if we have specific questions to ask you. Would that be easier? Yeah?
Be a lot easier.
That's, that's what I'm thinking, so if we can get the public getting some questions in, and, um, actually, even Tony as well, if you wanna, because it, you know, we can do the questions like, but it just seems to me, it's a bit, I'm trying to figure out how to make it a bit more streamlined and more related, so it's not one question here, one question here, and then it was like, "Oh yeah, those things are actually related." So it would be help, I think, would be helpful to me, as a subcommittee, to get a little bit more structure, so we can kind of figure out, what is it we can do, what is it we can't do? And I know you've said it before, but it's probably gonna take a few more times of saying, "Yes, you can do that, no, you can't do that. This is what the state is taking care of." And what we should be doing as, repeating, just to make it, like another, what you said, "Okay, make sure that you, you zero in on this. This is really important." This, that would be helpful, is from, from me as well.
In, in the, where you going?
Go ahead, Mr. LeBeau.
Why, thank you. We're not gonna take questions from the general public, you're talking just about this group of people here, am I right? 'Cause in the beginning, they said there was no, no participation from the public, just the three public that we had picked.
We're not, we're not asking the public?
No. It wasn't allowed in the original, anyway. I don't mind, I'll answer any questions they want. But I thought it was just us, am I wrong, Tony?
I think, I think public participation was, um, part of, yes, correct, yes.
That's what I wanted to do from the very beginning.
I don't, I don't think there's any restriction on that in the, in the resolution.
Okay, I just, I thought that we were just doing the council, the three, and we-
Only because, to me, it would be more valuable.
I agree.
Okay, and it would be more transparent.
I don't wanna break down the rules, I already got enough charter complaints against it.
They don't have any charter complaints against it.
Wasn't what they said, when I called them that name.
But I think it could be, I think it could be helpful, uh, because, because there's a lot of confusion. And it's like, I think, I think more people come in and talk and say, "What did you say? What did you mean by that?" I, I think that would be helpful.
My suggestion would be to hold that, after we have the next meeting, we get kind of all the stuff on paper.
Yeah. Uh, yeah, because then-
Then maybe do that, you know?
That's not a bad idea, yeah. And also-
I think everybody's getting their heads around all the-
Trying to figure, yeah, and it's like, before we have a hundred questions, it was like, okay, if we put this there, maybe that will clarify the, clarify some things and put some questions in. That's fine with me.
It's almost like if you do a newsletter with like, most of this information on it.
Yeah.
Look at it, review it, and then release it to the public, and then ninety-nine percent of the questions could be answered.
It might be already answered, and they also might be answered by-
We're sitting there for twelve hours, listening to people.
And you might get some really good input.
I, I was thinking, you know?
Questions you wouldn't think of.
Right.
Right.
Public, public testimony is very important, and we need to make sure that all of our boards are accessible to the public.
No doubt about it.
Absolutely. So just to finish up, item number four, um, you have your assignments. If you can have those, some, a write-up for that particular topic for the next meeting, that would be good. If you have any questions or issues, certainly, reach out to myself or, or Chris, and we can help you out. For the next, so that's, so that's for the next meeting. And then, at the next meeting, also, I think we would be in a position to do the assignments for the operational piece of this. So this is the pre-construction, um, item. If we can, at the next meeting, decide, uh, what is included in the, um, operational piece of this, then we can do that assignment and get that wrapped up, too. Assign it next meeting, and then, the next meeting after that, uh, get the, the product. Any questions on that? Uh, now, the next item on the agenda, I don't know where it came from, but I did not put it on this agenda. It's discussion on progress of Roundabout on Stafford Road. I don't know where that came from, but, um, I'm crossing that off the agenda.
If you want, I can address that for the next meeting, if I can get a report from DOT on the status of that.
That would be great. I remember- Yep, I, I don't, um, the next item would be establishing a schedule for future meetings. I think we really need to move on this pretty quickly.
There was a suggestion made, I think Christine, you might have made it way back, just in a general conversation, about possibly meeting on alternative weeks when the council's not meeting, like first and third, or whatever, but that needs to be looked at. I don't know, it's up to you guys. That's a lot of meetings, I know.
That, that, that's a lot of meetings.
Asking you folks, uh, you folks.
We have, yeah. Pretty-
Well, let's talk about it, and we'll see what's rest.
Let's try to get, maybe one every three weeks, instead of every week?
No, you don't wanna go that long. If you go every three weeks, we won't have to stand, they'll have it already starting construction.
Well, we're lucky to get this one going, we'll do it.
So-
So we'll be at a meeting every week, every Monday, for the, until this thing's built?
Well, at least, until, I think the critical piece is to get this pre-construction, uh, host agreement, because they're gonna start construction, so we wanna get that in place. We, again, the, the second priority is the, the, once it gets operational, but I think we need this first piece, 'cause they're starting to make it through the planning board process, and we need to be in place with this. So-
Well, then I'm down.
Then you're down.
Signed up.
You signed up. So when would be a good time to have our next meeting?
Um, I'm off. I'm looking at the next, uh, the next, uh, free Monday is the fifteenth. I'm off, I'm away that week. The next free Monday is the twenty-ninth, which is Memorial Day.
Oh, yeah, I'm down, we'll have a cookout.
It's like-
You cook, we'll eat.
Yeah.
I like that, that's a good idea.
Well, we have a meeting on the eve. Ms. Ryan won't be here on the fifteenth, how about the twenty-second? Though we have a meeting on the twenty-second.
Do we have a county, town council meeting? But does it have to be a Monday?
No.
How about you, Tony?
So long as it's not a Thursday.
Yeah, that third week is a tough week for me.
Oh, you can't do it either?
No. I can only make Mondays or Fridays.
For what?
I can only make Mondays or Fridays.
Okay.
'Cause we have session until first of July. Every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, I, um, I have, I'm on five committees.
Yep.
I'm not gonna get out till eight or nine o'clock.
Okay.
Well, Mondays or Fridays work for me, so you guys tell me when, I'll be here.
Her on vacation when? Ten through?
The tenth through the seventeenth. So I couldn't make that, I couldn't make that, I could make the nineteenth, that's a, I could make the Friday. Are, uh, are you folks, um, available on Friday? Friday? The nineteenth?
Friday the nineteenth.
No, that's early voting for the FDR.
Oh.
So we'll come and vote, and then we'll have a meeting.
We'll meet somewhere else, I'm just telling you, I'm not gonna be there. I mean, I'm not gonna make every single meeting, anyway.
Right. Well, we have to, but if, if you don't make it, Leon, are you gonna make every meeting?
No, Leon is just here tonight, 'cause we're gonna do another work.
Okay.
This committee doesn't have the funds to be paying Leon to be here.
What's open on the nineteenth?
What's what?
What's open on the nineteenth? Where, where, where won't there be, where's the early voting, just in here?
In the town hall, right.
So we can go to the library, since it's, so, can you send it?
We can try and get you somewhere else, sure, we'll send out an email.
Are you good for Friday the nineteenth?
Yeah.
You good for Friday the nineteenth, that, Tony?
I can make, what time?
Seven o'clock.
On Friday?
Sure, why not? What else you guys got?
You're gonna take us all up for drinks after.
You guys are all-
That big an expense account.
You guys, yeah, you can do it. Seven o'clock, seven o'clock, and Friday, the nineteenth.
Where?
We don't know yet.
So it'll either be the library or the senior center. But we'll let you know.
Sure, the senior center's-
But is it gonna be hot in there?
It's bingo.
The library.
Library is nice.
We'll check, and we'll email you.
Oh, is the library open, though, on Friday night?
You can just take key.
We'll figure it out.
Okay, we'll let you know.
Yeah, we'll try not to do this too often.
And then probably the next, why don't we do the next one after that, would be on the twenty, no, not the twenty-ninth?
Oh, yeah.
Always have a council meeting.
No, council meeting's on twelve.
June fifth?
June fifth will work.
June fifth?
Yeah.
It's a Monday?
Tony, June fifth?
I can do June fifth.
All right, you folks can do June fifth?
Yeah, okay.
Seven o'clock?
Yeah, here?
Perfect. Yeah, that one should be here, should be okay. I think if Nancy can secure it for us, she does have a pull-in, the key.
So, five nineteen, and then six five. Just so we have at least two meetings scheduled in advance, um, that'd be good. Okay, so we, we do know that it's either a Monday or a Friday. And we bypass Labor Day, even though Mr. LeBeau offered to have a cookout at his place Memorial Day. Memorial Day.
So you have it right at the shop? Bring your bulletproof vests and your skills?
Okay. Any other casino regulatory issues? I think we covered all of them. Right?
Can I ask Jay Edwards one question before we leave?
Yes, man, you want, I'll say it.
All right, well, this was back, back to when you mentioned it about the inspections, and you do big projects. So you're saying, like, the engineers, everything's set, 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 point, so it's really just a basic walkthrough, and just saying, what kind of set of plans?
The inspectors always have the ability to go through and inspect the building, that's their job. But because this is a, um, a larger project, and it's more complicated, the state puts in their, um, in the building code, provisions so they can have what they call controlled construction, and it makes the architects and the engineers and their entire team responsible for certifying that, that the building is built in accordance with their drawings.
And Rhode Island law, or whatever.
Well, they, they can't, can't get a building permit without it being, like, I just want- Well, it's on the, it's on the form they sign. If you look at under, if you look up under Google, Rhode Island controlled construction, you'll see they actually have a copy of the form, and the architects and engineers have to certify. They have to, they have to randomly inspect and periodically inspect the project. And then they have to send in certifications in timely fashion to the building inspector, so that he has evidence that they've been out and seen, seen the various parts of the project. The structural engineer will inspect the footings, the foundations, um, the initial steel, and he'll do a final inspection of all this, all the structural steel. This, this is why a smaller town like Tiverton wouldn't have someone who, um, who's capable of doing all those trades. So you can have a bigger project in a smaller town and not overwhelm our building inspector, because it would basically take all of them's time.
Yep.
So that's basically the thing, when I built my smaller, I built it exactly what they did. They sent, I paid for an engineer to come out and sign off on everything, and then that was turned in, it'll be the same idea.
Same process.
A little bit bigger.
Yes, perfect. And your construction manager, I think, is Gilbain. They'd be responsible for getting all the engineers out monthly, or what, or periodically, to get those inspections into me.
Okay. Great. Anything else? Motion to adjourn?
Second.
I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. I have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anonymous, thank you.